Here. Got so quiet. Are you ready? Sorry, you're good, you're good.
Well, thank you, it got so quiet so quickly. We are so grateful to see so many faces here on this rainy, I don't know, has it turned to snow yet, evening? Hopefully, we can get you all out of here before it does turn to snow. So anyways, we'll start our meeting with our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You know, I love saying the pledge. I don't get to say it very often, except for at board meetings, for the most part, and I think it's very poignant tonight, or today is election day, and I hope all of you had the opportunity to drop your ballot in the mail, or in the box, or make it to the polling stations. We're really grateful, we are lucky to be in a country where we have the opportunity to vote. So anyways, wanted a shout out for our election day today. We are going to start off, we Valerie Shields, just want to let you know, our board member, she is not well tonight, and couldn't make it, and Scott Bryan must have hit traffic, he will be here soon. We are going to start off with recognition and good news. We will invite Principal Thomas Trotter up here from West Elementary.
Thank you. I just, I wanted to start by saying how lucky I feel to get to work at West Elementary. I've only been there for a couple months, but it's really a fantastic school and a great community, and I really enjoy working there. I tell my staff that I enjoy coming to work every day, and I think that that's a pretty special thing. I wanted to start by inviting each of you to our Saint Martin's Day German Celebration tomorrow evening. It's at six o'clock at the school. Saint Martin's Day is a traditional German holiday celebrating Saint Martin's compassion, service, and generosity. Our program will include a presentation on Saint Martin, musical numbers, a petting zoo, crafts, and traditional German treats. So we hope you'll be able to join us there tomorrow. We will now be pleased to hear from members of the West Elementary Choir, led by Leslie Taylor, Catherine Fetzer, and Valerie Layton. They will favor us with first, I'm going to try this, the German song "Ich geh mit meiner Laterne mit mir", which means "I'm going with my lantern". They will then favor us with our school song, "The Heart of a Lion".
Sorry. Da ist noch kein Läger.
Ich gehe mit meiner Laterne und meine Laterne mit mir. Da oben leuchten die Sterne, hier unten leuchtet mir. Ein Licht aus mir zu Martin's Herd, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ein Licht aus mir zu Martin's Herd, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ich gehe mit meiner Laterne und meine Laterne mit mir. Da oben leuchten die Sterne, hier unten leuchtet mir. Der Martin's Mann ist sie voran, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Der Martin's Mann ist sie voran, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ich gehe mit meiner Laterne und meine Laterne mit mir. Da oben leuchten die Sterne, hier unten leuchtet mir. Wie schön das klingt, wenn jeder singt, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Wie schön das klingt, wenn jeder singt, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ich gehe mit meiner Laterne und meine Laterne mit mir. Da oben leuchten die Sterne, hier unten leuchtet mir. Ein Kuchenduft klingt in der Luft, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ein Kuchenduft klingt in der Luft, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ich gehe mit meiner Laterne und meine Laterne mit mir. Da oben leuchten die Sterne, hier unten leuchtet mir. Beschenkt uns heut, wir lieben lohnt, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Beschenkt uns heut, wir lieben lohnt, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Ich gehe mit meiner Laterne und meine Laterne mit mir. Da oben leuchten die Sterne, hier unten leuchtet mir. Mein Licht ist aus, ich gehe nach Haus, ab in der Abamme Rabum. Mein Licht ist aus, ich gehe nach Haus, ab in der Abamme Rabum.
You guys ready? We live with the heart of a lion at West. That means that each day we will give it my best. To learn and to grow into all I can be. To help everyone on this journey with me. So let out a growl from deep in your chest. For we have the heart of a lion at West. At West Elementary, we wear red and blue. We learn to be brave and we learn to be true. We face every challenge by giving a roar. And each time we fall, we will rise up once more. So let out a growl from deep in your chest. For we have the heart of a lion at West.
Wir brüllen, wir brüllen, wir brüllen dreimal. Die Löwen von West hören wir überall.
I'm especially excited for this nomination. I think we've been able to keep it a secret from him, but for our student of the month, we'd like to recognize Jacob Richardson. Come on up, Jacob. Jacob, right here. So Jacob Richardson is a sixth grade student at West Elementary, participating in the German dual-language immersion program. Jacob is a friendly, active student who strives to do his best and to do what is right. In 2019, Jacob was involved in a car accident that changed his life. The car accident resulted in a traumatic brain injury, greatly affecting Jacob's ability to function and participate in a school setting. Even with this difficult circumstance, Jacob has given his all to improving and growing in his education, and has been closing learning gaps. Mrs. Montgomery, one of Jacob's teachers, states, "Jacob has made incredible growth and is outperforming everyone's expectations. Jacob demonstrates an energy of life and is incredibly kind. He has a refreshing disposition and helps keep a smile on all of our faces. We are proud to nominate Jacob as West Elementary's Student of the Year."
I am so afraid right now.
You'll do her.
I am so terrified.
Tell us who's here with you.
I just got to take some deep breaths, if you know.
Should we just have your family stand up?
Yeah, sure.
All right. Great support system. And we'll start over here with Superintendent Ernst, he'll shake his hand and go across.
Wait.
Right over here. Thanks, Jacob. All right, for our Certified Employee of the Month, we have Sidney Watcott. So Sidney Watcott is a special education teacher at West Elementary School. She has worked for the Iron County School District, the Carbon County School District, and is now planning to stay in the Tewila County School District for a long time. Sidney demonstrates patience and perseverance in even the most difficult of situations. Sidney is currently on our guiding coalition, has taken on the responsibility of the Chromebook Specialist, and was recently elected as one of our TEA representatives for the building. She is a leader among our staff. She carries herself with dignity, presents herself with confidence, and expresses herself eloquently in all situations. She collaborates with all members of our school community and sets an example for others to follow. Sidney has the respect of everyone at our school. Some of her colleagues have commented, "She is so kind and brings such a wonderful feeling to our school. She is always smiling, and she helps us feel so appreciated. Sidney is always there to help wherever help is needed. She never loses her cool, even in the face of some really challenging situations." And the last comment, "I would love to have any of my grandkids have a teacher like her." Sidney promotes and helps move our school mission and vision forward. With Sidney's help, we are preparing all of our students for the future. We are pleased to nominate Sidney Watcott as West Elementary's Certified Employee of the Year.
Mr. Trotter says I get to introduce my family. So my husband Webb is back there, holding my, our son Vaughn, and then Kenna, saying with the choir, she goes to West, so.
So our Classified Employee of the Month is Heather Riedalch. Heather has been our Art Aid at West Elementary for the last five years. Heather is very much a team player, willing to step in and help wherever there is a need. She always has a positive attitude and helps to spread joy throughout the school. Heather takes pride in her work each day with a student's first attitude. Heather created our Heart of a Lion mascot, which we are proud to be one of the first things seen when walking into our school building. She communicates and collaborates well with all members of our school. Students look forward to attending her art class each week. Heather's art lessons and projects are very innovative, helping our students to learn and to stretch their understanding. She is reliable to always be available for the students, and is very flexible as changes take place throughout each day. We are lucky to have Heather as our Art Aid, and are pleased to nominate her as West Elementary's Classified Employee of the Year.
All right, so I've got my husband Tyler, and then my three girls, Zoe, Sophie, and the little one Lily. They all are or have attended West.
Lastly, our Volunteer of the Month is Jennifer Andrews. Jen Andrews has been a constant volunteer and supporter at West Elementary for many years. She is currently our PTA President, the Vice Chair of our Community Council, a guest teacher, and a volunteer throughout the school building. She is dependable and reliable, and makes our school a better place. Jen strives to follow all rules and procedures, and has a determination to do things the right way. She is also a great leader, taking charge when necessary, but also allowing others to lead and grow. She is dedicated to all of our students, and shows great support to each of our staff members. She is easy to get along with and is friendly to everyone. We appreciate the many hours each week Jen spends at our school. We are honored to nominate Jennifer Andrews as our Volunteer of the Year at West Elementary.
My husband Craig is here, and my two boys, Brecken and Declan, and my daughter Ireland couldn't make it.
Okay, thank you, West Elementary, for being here. We appreciate all you do for our district, and appreciate your kids. That was an amazing performance. Thank you very much. We will, don't feel, this is probably a good time if you would like to be excused. You can stay for as long as you want, but you can, don't feel bad if you have to leave. Except for board members. And executive staff. We're going to go ahead and move on to our Patreon comments. We've got, I'll just remind you, when you come up, I'll read your name when you come up, just state your name into the microphone, because it will be recorded, and then you'll have three minutes. And remember that we're not being rude or unkind when we don't respond, we're just open meeting laws prevent us from responding because it's not on the agenda. We are listening to you. So we'll start with our first one, Mitzi Belverstone.
Hi, good evening. I'm Mitzi Belverstone. SPOT's Board Members would like to thank you, to thank Superintendent Ernst, Assistant Superintendent Hamm, and Jackie, TEA Board Members, for coming together and collaborating to make a cohesive policy that we hope will satisfy your request. We are asking at this time to approve the policy of recognition of employee associations. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our next person, Ty Bevan.
Hello, I'm Ty Bevan, and I'm representing TEA today. As we enter this holiday season, TEA would like to express our gratitude for the relationship that we have with the school district. The ability to work together on issues as they arise is mutually beneficial for both teachers and the district. We look forward to the opportunity to continue working together in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Shelley Snow.
Hello, I'm Shelley Snow. I'm back. Thanks for this opportunity. I just wanted to reiterate kind of what I said last board meeting, that honestly, we, as a SPOT SD Association, really, the bottom line is, we just want things better for Tewila County School District, for our employees, and for everyone. We want to be a team player. We want everybody to pitch in and make this the best district out there. There's always room for improvement, but when we don't have a voice, that matters, and that hurts us. It hurts the district. There's nothing more than we want is to have collaboration and negotiations with our superintendent, with our leaders, and help our employees in the situations that sometimes they are put in, and just to have a voice to do that, to be on the team. As the policy is now, and we redid it, we're hoping that with this new policy to calculate the numbers in this manner, it will give us a voice. And what is wrong with that? We just want, in good faith, to be good employers, and to have good things happen here, and I think they can and have. And regardless of what some might think, it's, I have been in negotiations and in collaborations, where we have collaborated for every single different category of employees we have in our classified employees, whether it have been for custodials, secretaries, lunchrooms, maintenance, custodians, whoever. Whether they be members or not, they have reaped the benefits of what we have come out of those meetings. And I just really, really want you to vote on this, and please give us that voice that is so crucial for everyone, everyone here. And I just say that, so thank you very much.
Thank you. Alrighty, we will go ahead and move on to our consent items, and I'm looking for a motion.
Madam Chair, I move, I move the consent items.
It's been moved by Bob, seconded by Julia, to approve the consent items. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, moving on to our Business Administrators Report. Lark Reynolds.
All right. Let me make sure I'm connected up here. Well, it's, it's good to be here today, even on Election Day. You know, I'm actually looking out and see a couple people I know running for school board, and they're still joining us, even on Election Day. So how neat is that? But as far as some items that I wanted to talk about, I'm sorry, this isn't in your presentation. I was making some last-minute tweaks. I started with a joke. I just thought I'd put this one up here. Happened to be the calendar for yesterday, but it gave me a good, good laugh. For those in the back who can't see, the little print at the bottom is, "Come with us, ma'am", and, and if you were, if you, if I were you, I'd get a good lawyer. No one's going to buy that my husband was only hibernating story. Is there, is there pulling a frozen person out of the fridge? So, just, thought that was a good way to start our little far side joke for the beginning of our meeting. But I did have a few topics to go over. Thought we would, I kind of reversed the order, probably if you were looking at it earlier. I thought I'd better start with APR, AFR and APR first, and then we'll get into the financial statements. I want to talk a little bit about Project Kids from our state auditor, and then we'll end with hopefully a discussion of, of this topic that I planted a seed back in, in June when we were adopting the budget, and I don't think, in our rush, we haven't talked about it since, so maybe this is a good time to talk about that $3 million that we set aside, have reserved for you. So, that's kind of our discussions for the day. As far as the annual financial report, or annual program report, those are due, as you recall, just a little reminder, they're due on October 1st of every year. So about the last time I presented, we had some financial statements that were at the time being audited, and of course still are, you know, next month, our auditors will, will show up and, and report to you. So what we do is, because these reports are due by, by October 1st, and they match our fund financial statements, we make sure we talk to our auditors, and so, long story short, we had one adjustment we needed to make right at the very end, as we, as we talked to them, a proposal. And so, the, the numbers that you were actually given a month ago, have been updated, and we have the new report. That was submitted, as you can see, on the 30th. We've posted them on our website, so anybody can view them. And hopefully, the links work in there, in your, in your presentation. If you actually view them, I'm going to click on them here, and it did take me out. So let me get back into my PowerPoint here. This is the, the annual financial report, the way the state prepares it. It's very long, it's 29 pages there. And you can see it's very detailed, it's, it's in their system, but it looks like how you've traditionally seen it with four years of column, where you have an actual from the prior year, your final budget for the 22-year, then where we ended up actually, and our original budget for 23-year. So that's the four-column layout. The program report is completely different, if I get back to that. The program report is more detailed. Sometimes it's fine print in that, in the PDF version, so that's why, for you board members, I put them in the Excel, because I like to see that. You can play around with a little more, make it larger. But that is what a lot of the programs at the state office use. For example, the CTE program focuses on that CTE one, Special Ed will focus on, on theirs. And it's, and the intent of it is to break it out by program, and see an operating statement, if you can, by program, is the intent of that report. And then the third one on there, which is actually my personal favorite, and that's why I put my preferred view, is, oh, I'm sorry, I jumped ahead, instead of clicking on the link, is the one that I've, I've traditionally given you. And that's, that's the one that we had last month. You can see at the end, it prints the date that I generated these on the 30th, so this, this should match the fund financial statements when they're presented to you next month by our auditors. Now, as you probably recall, when they come, they talk about a government-wide financial statement, as well as the fund financial statements, and realize that the APR and AFR is just the fund financial statements. They'll, of course, go over some more things when, when they come and present. But I prefer this view because it's a little bit shorter, 16 pages, but the reason, it's two pages per fund. So this one green here is all our funds that I happen to be looking at, and you can scroll through and look at individual programs. This pink one here is our general fund, and again, it's in that four-column layout. Just a summary level that I like. So, I wanted to go over those in, in preparation for the next part on, in the PowerPoint. And that, that happens to be the financial statements that we generate. That's those fund financial statements that I showed you there at the end. We've traditionally given those to you at year-end, and the reason I've done that is because we prepare them manually. All the figures that were input in there, basically, I take out of our, our accounting software and put it into this Excel spreadsheet that creates these financial statements. So because we do that, we like to have the financial statements to prepare to show you, because that's good to have, have that, as well as our auditors, when they come. But I, because I've done that at year-end, and it's really just a timing thing, we've traditionally done that at year-end. Of course, in budgeting, we give you a similar four-column layout as we prepare for the budget. So throughout the month, in which you've just approved on the consent agendas, you looked at them, what we've done monthly is that we've put in there the, the monthly expenditure reports, revenue reports, and dispersment details. Now, it's been quite a few years, I believe, that we've actually talked about changing any of the reports we've given you. Hopefully, that means that we're giving you the, the information that you like and need as you prepare that. But the, the reason we've waited till year-end to prepare the financial statements, from a timing perspective, is because you're given monthly reports of where we're at, and you're given your, based on the budget adopted, and you have percentages in there of what's spent, where we're at year-to-date and current month. And of course, that's what you're familiar with, and just, just we're reviewing. But- with, and just were reviewing. But today, I had, and I wish I would have known about this years ago. So, just one of the best things I took from a training I recently attended was our financial software. It's been rebranded and renamed. It's now called School ERP Pro. But it's able to generate some, they had some templates in there for some operating statements that I've provided in there as templates. And I like them because they can be generated really quickly and could be put in, potentially, in the consent agenda, if you happen to like them. So, I've provided some examples that are in there. Of course, these were the first ones that I tried. We can customize it and make it what, I can change some things in the custom, or the format, that I'll show you here in a bit. And then I have a question mark on there. Do we want these broken out by fund or altogether? So, I thought we'd review the different proposals that are in there, and then I will toggle into them, so you can view them. Within the system, as it generates an operating statement, it has these four options. I can run an operating statement, balance sheet, operating statement with budget, and with encumbrances. And so, let me toggle back in. So, the balance sheet that it created, I just ran this on our general fund, and I did this, as you can see at the top of this one, as of 9:30. So this part, I jumped out of the PowerPoint and just showing those to you. So hopefully, you can either pull them up on your device, or if you don't, if you, or turn around, whichever you prefer. But this was just the general fund. It, as of that date and time, you can see I have the assets on there, liabilities. Equity is a fund balance that was rolled forward. And what I like is it has this net addition deficit. Well, that net addition deficit line is what you'd call your profit and loss, or your, I shouldn't, well, that's the standard the businesses use. I should say, operating statement for our district. And so, and so, that gets added into the equity part. And of course, I have to go to the second page there, but you'll see the total liabilities and equity of 88.9 million matches our assets up above. So it's a really quick, two-page, in this case, summary of a balance sheet that our system was able to generate. And I think that one goes great hand-in-hand with the operating statement, which was, which was, is this view here. So, again, looking at the general fund financial statements, one thing that I didn't like is I noticed it cut off the end date here, but that happened to be the balance sheet date of 9:30. What I like about it is we can put a point in time. So, that this first column in there, when you get operating statement, instead of having just one column now, they have the period we run it in, and this happened to be month of September. And then in the second column, you have your year-to-date, where you're at. And so, I tried to follow our pattern of our fund financial statements, of here's the local income, state, and federal revenue. What differed is the expenses. Now, in there, I, we could actually simplify this, and this is one example to show you. Right now, I tried to break it out by function and object. So you can see, and then I have the instruction, or I, maybe I should have worded it instructional, but that's classroom instruction. And then we further break it, broke it down by salaries, benefits, et cetera, in the classroom instruction. We put all support services together, and depending on the fund, it could have multiple functions. Well, one quick way is if you didn't care, if, for example, you didn't want to see the, the functions broken out in so much detail, you could group them all together and just have it by object. So you could have the salaries, benefits, professional, that would shrink this view right here of expenses. I'm sorry, I forgot to turn off my notifications there. But bottom line is, in this example here, there was $22.7 million of expenses broken out, at least in the general fund, under instruction and support services. The other section happens to be usually transfers in and out, is mostly what it'd be. You can see we had a small insurance recovery, and then our bottom-line addition in this case, if it was negative, it would be a deficit of where are we at year-to-date. So, I like that operating statement, really quick, easy to look at, I hope. The third one, the third option was they will add in the budget. And this one was intriguing, because it's just the same as the other one, other than the first column, of course, is your period and your year-to-date. What's different is they add in a budget column and a balance. And the reason I like this report is you can, they have the percentages out to the side, similar to what you see in some of the reports we give you every month. And so, some things may stand out, like you can see 238.9% of the interest revenue we had budgeted. Well, interest rates have been really increasing this year, and so that also means for us that we can earn more interest. And you can see that, that's a reflection of that. And then, of course, you can see maybe other lines in there as you look down through it. The third option was brought in encumbrances. And so it added another column. In doing that, it moved the budget to the very first column there. So again, looking at the same period. So it moved the budget first, next, you know, your range-to-date, year-to-date, balance, and then it brought in encumbrances. Of course, we don't encumber any revenue, but we do expenditures we know we're gonna spend. And one of the classic examples I like to use of that is salaries, that we know what we're gonna pay out in salaries, based on the contracts we've entered into. And so you can see there's a lot in there in salaries and benefits that have been encumbered. And so, again, it adds that percentage column, where you can go down and look at, look at where we're at with encumbrances. You know, just one that I happened to notice, just eyeballing it there is property, you can see, is already going to be overspent. So we could drill into further detail if we wanted to see that. But again, a two, quick two-page, and this one prints on two, unless I consolidate some of those expenditure areas, to give a quick operating statement for you. And so with that, because I liked these statements and wanted to talk about them today, really, that's why I have the two questions in there, and this is where I'll pause and let you actually tell me what you thought as you reviewed them. So, the first one was that if you do like a particular report, or maybe all of them, or just certain ones, would you like us to add that to the consent agenda on a regular basis? Do you like seeing these reports?
Bob?
Well, I didn't know my mic was on, but I'll go ahead and speak. I personally like the, I like the reports that Lark just showed us. I particularly like the operating statement with the encumbrance, because it kind of gives us an idea where we're at, or where we're maybe getting carried away, or whatever. I don't know if we need to see them on a monthly basis. I would say more of a, maybe, you know, I'm not opposed to a monthly basis, but you know, depending on the amount of time and effort that goes into it, I think a quarterly basis would be pretty good to see that on, so that we kind of could have a good update by quarter, so.
Lark, is it a lot of work? I would think that this is data that you've already got. You just have to hit print. Is that, I mean, print or export?
Yeah, and that's the good news, is not only because it's now a report in our system that we've created, it has this new feature where we can, it'll run it automatically for us and email it on a certain date. So what's really nice about it is I could generate it and have it emailed to Jackie to be put in the board packet on however often you'd like to see.
So no work?
So it really is, it can be automated.
And I was, yeah, I was gonna say the same thing. I think sometimes our constituents like to see the budget, and that's an easy place for, if Jackie gets a phone call, or if any of us, look at our consent calendar, right? It'll be on the consent portion. Is that what could be? I think that's a great idea.
Yeah, my intent is to add it to the other reports that we have in there, unless there's a feeling of, we want to eliminate one of those, and look at this, for example. I'm just throwing that out there. My intent was just to add it to what other reports are already in there.
Does any, yeah, I think.
So, here's a question, since you brought up the reports that are, and maybe we don't want to have true confession in a public forum with all the board members, but I wonder how many of us spend a lot of time going through the, I don't know, how many, it seems like endless pages, Lark, of expenditures and revenues. You know, nothing personal, Lark, and I'm sure that's exciting to you and your team, but for the rest of us, eh, you know, it's important. And I think that that's what that summary brings. And if we have questions, I feel like we can dig into that. But is there a requirement that we get? The minutia that we get? I mean, we want to be compliant, okay? But I'm just curious.
Yeah, there's, well, I know it's, being that you are the governing body of the school district, I know that that's one of the things auditors do ask, how often you are presented information. And I do believe there is, I haven't reviewed the law recently, but I do believe that it requires it on a regular basis, whether that be monthly, whenever we meet, that we do review some financial data.
But with that report, okay, so here is the expenditure report. This is on the consent agenda, in case anyone's looking. So on the consent agenda, or on the consent items, expenditure, revenue, and dispersment. Those are the three reports from you, right, that are on that consent? So does this, one of those reports already, is that all-encompassing, just on a smaller, like on a easier, what's the word I'm looking for, like consolidated view?
It just doesn't have the detail, right? I mean, the dispersment report is 162 pages, right? I mean, that's why I've said, I suspect that most of us don't go through. Some nights when I can't sleep, I'm really bored, Lark, I'll admit. I do look at it, but it's on those nights, and it knocks me right out. But there's 162 pages, and that's a lot. And so that's why, I guess I'm asking, if we need to have it, and there's a reason, great. But I suspect, kind of like what Bob said, is this a lot of work to generate this? Because I suspect most of us don't look at it.
It isn't. Now, we created the backbone for it. It'll be quick. To answer, I think, maybe, hopefully, this answers both of your questions. But really, the revenue and expenditure report happens to be this fund financial operating statement. You could combine those two, if you wanted to eliminate a report. Those are a little more detailed, so if you want to have that detail, I'd leave them in there. But if you're okay with this higher level, they could be eliminated with the operating statement, the revenue and expenditure. The dispersment one is really in there for, and it happens to be the longest one, but that is just so you see every, now granted, it doesn't have payroll, so you're not seeing payroll names in there, but every check that we cut, every, sorry, they're called non-check batches, but they're electronic payments to vendors. They're in there just so you can see, in case there's anything that catches your eye of why was this, you know? I like to use the example of Rob Smith shared, that one of his board members did review theirs, and was asking why, around COVID, they had a payment to a distillery, an alcohol distillery, and the answer was because they were looking for hand sanitizer. But it was, the reason they caught it was on a dispersment report, and why would we buy something from that vendor? So that's why it's on there, is just kind of a double check, so you can see all those. Yeah. Does that help answer your question about could it replace one of them, or which ones?
Yeah. I mean, I think if we want to add that, if you want to add that monthly, it's another view for us and the public to see, because the public, we want them to see everything that we see as well.
Okay, good.
So, does anyone have anything else to say on that, or?
Do you need a formal motion?
I don't think for that. I think we can, we're good with that direction. Thank you. So, I'll do that. I'll put them in there. You're right, some of that's detailed. Maybe you'll just, maybe you'll find your favorite report to review when you go through every month. And if it happens to be this summary one, like I said, if you, what I like about it, those percentages on the side, and I think I'll put the encumbrances in, is what I heard. So we'll use that one as the operating statement with the balance sheet. I'll start with those two. And that way, if you see something on there you want, have more detail on, feel free to reach out to me. We can drill in and get into further detail if you have some questions. But I'll do that. The second one I wanted to show you was Project Kids. And that's because in my last, in the meeting I attended, too, we had our state auditor there, Auditor Dugle, and he's been talking about Project Kids. I think he even presented it at USBA, if anybody attended that a little while ago. I believe he's, it's been one of the projects that the state has put some money into. I know he's requested data from every school district, so he has a lot of our data in there. And so, I actually have a link, of course, from there. So if you click on Project Kids, for those wanting to see it, hopefully that link works, takes you right in. He has some things on the front page, of course, describing what they did. They take not only financial data, which I was used to, they got data from our student information system for students, and then they got testing data, and they mirrored these, and so they ran these reports with things that we just traditionally haven't thought of maybe doing sometimes before. And in there, the one that I wanted to show you that I thought was good, he has all these different tools that you can click on. You can compare, you know, even has the spending side. You can have spending comparisons to other ones. They have the testing data, so they have some peer schools comparisons, graduation rates. I won't go into any of those. The ones that he showed us that I found intriguing, that he just pointed out while we were in this meeting, was the teacher pay. And I'll just show it to you briefly. If I go to that teacher pay, it brings up, and it just highlights 2021. So now we're back, this is two years ago, if we look at it that way. I mean, I guess last full year of data would be 2022. He doesn't have that yet. So, and of course, we're in 2023, which he won't have for a while. But 2021 was the last year of data, and he would have on here, and I point that, because I happened to be sitting behind Salt Lake's School District's business administrator in this meeting. And I remember him feeling like he'd been, they'd been beaten up, you know, at times. And he said, "Well, I gotta show my teachers this," because they happened to be number two, right, behind Park City, right? But, and granted, this is taken an average for that school district. But of course, we can find us down here, and what's this, this chart to the left, that I'm kind of hovering over, you can see, it'll actually give you some numbers. This is statewide averages. So if I happen to click on Tuilla, and I think I'll do that, just to show you, am I blind? There's Tuilla County. You can see our chart, which is kind of interesting. You're probably wondering how teachers can make less than, you know, this low range here. But that's because we contract out periods, and sometimes that's all they do. So these are really part-time teachers. And you can kind of see our charter graph, where people lie on salary. You can see, we have a lot that, one way of looking at this is we have a lot of young teachers.
Lark, what I found interesting on that was if you just click on the years of experience, change that to a one, because that's all. But this would be, if you change it to one, that's representative of starting.
So, there you go. So, little things that you can play around with in this tool. Just wanted to point that out to you, but, and show you how you can use that side, if you're so interested. But what I took out of it, that I thought was good news from us, because, oh wow, and I see a mistake right there, in there. I didn't, that bottom line should be 2021, not 2019. I apologize. So, I'll make that change. But I just wanted to show the growth we've had over the last few years, to go from where we were at, out of the 41 districts, and whether we were below or above these averages, I thought that was something that we could celebrate with it, to just visually view that moving up in the tool with some of the changes. I think we need to owe, we, of course, owe a great deal of gratitude for the public, for passing the voted levy increase years ago. And because of that, we've been able to ratchet up salaries, as you can see, from year to year. That and the other growth that we've experienced has been a positive thing for us. So I thought we could celebrate that. Again, the data, I didn't drill into it. One of the things that I found interesting is that in 2019, we were eighth, and then we dropped to 18 to 12. And I think it's because we did some cleaning up in those years. I think he was basing this off the function and classroom instruction, and you probably recall me saying this years ago, we sometimes had directors categorized in instruction, and when we found out, we cleaned it up and made them more support instead of classroom. And that would explain why it had this little blip in there. And, and, and so, that's my personal belief, without actually drilling into the data. And the reason I say that is if you actually went to those bar charts in those years, you would see we had a lot on the upper end of the salary schedule. So unless they retired, and we hired new people, that was my thought, is it could be some of the cleanup from the, from our accounting structure, cleaning up what truly is instructional versus support. From our, um, accounting structure, cleaning up what truly is instructional versus support. But regardless, I think it's something we can celebrate as as we continue to to climb. That's a good thing for our, to show our employees as well. And then finally, um. This one, I I mainly wanted you to give me some feedback or some ideas you've had, or maybe we we put it listed as a, a future agenda item. As you recall, in June, when we were adopting the budget, in the past, we, um, one of the things we did years ago is we set aside some funds. Speaking of the voted levy increase, uh, we knew that we were going to be building schools back then. We knew that, um, we needed to do that. And so what we decided to do was set some money aside back then and treat it as one time money, um, for these schools opening. And that's what we've been doing for years. You can see some of the things I've listed on there that we've used that one time money for. We've offered employee bonuses in the past, um, we've purchased, we used it to purchase the warehouse property. Yeah, one year, last year, of course. I think I mentioned to you how we transferred it all to capital, because we realized that we were going to need it. Speaking of these, these new schools and and the inflation that we've experienced in construction costs. But, uh, the change that I made this year was instead of just, um, I thought let's, because we have treated that as one time money. And these are something that we've talked about as a board briefly in the past, but I thought let's be more transparent this year. And I'll just carve out this three million and I'll just leave it there and ask what you would like to do with that. And so even though I I talked about that in June, we've gotten so busy, we haven't talked about what the, what the, what to do with the three million. But, um. I thought I would just go to that bottom line on there. If you had any thoughts about what you'd like to do with that. Of course, uh, you know. If you talk about capital, it could be spent very quickly. You know, we we have this conversation about a fueling station or, um, other things that have, that have come up. And so I just thought I would let you go ahead and see what you guys have thought about or talked about. Anything you'd like to see this year.
So we view it, oh, Scott.
In some way, I feel like we already made the decision when we approved the fueling station. I mean, we we approved that without necessarily, uh. A source of revenue. I mean, where where was that money coming from that we approved? So I, it seems like to me that the logical thing would be to put it into capital and use that capital money to pay the, you know, the difference that we approved for the fueling station last, last meeting.
Okay. Yeah, that'd be great. I'm trying to remember the total cost, uh, one point seven million, one point eight.
And but the balance can stay in capital, I mean, that's my thoughts.
Camille, are you gonna turn on your light or not? Okay, while you're thinking, um. So this is one time money, but we always have it?
No, when we.
Seems like we've had it the last few years.
We've had it for a few years.
Okay, that's what I'm saying.
So that's why I treated it as one time, one, when we open those new schools, we're gonna have to hire additional staff to fill them. And so that's at that point that we'll, we'll dip into. Matter of fact, um, I even carved some out for twenty wells in full transparency. We were expecting that there would be some costs in there. When it came to actually preparing the budget and we gave all the increases we did, and there was still three million dollars in there, is what I'm saying. So we didn't have to dip into that even for twenty wells, so that's still a good thing to know. Granted, there, there is more staff at a, at a high school and a junior high than in an elementary, but that's, that's good news. We still have three million that I've set aside.
So on the, um, slide, you said. We have treated it as one time money. Last year, we transferred it all to capital. Is that right? And then we've offered employee bonuses, that was during COVID, is that right?
Yeah, we actually did that. Actually, we did it two years and.
And I thought we did bonuses last year too. Okay.
We did. Um, anything left over at the end of last year, we transferred to to capital. Of course, we had a good year and and it happened to be, um, more than just three million, as you recall, but we transferred everything, um, any. You know, additional, additions from our operating statement went into, uh, capital because of. Because of our projects coming up.
Right.
So I I wanted to, you're right, I just want to make, clarify that we did offer a bonus last year and and still transfer to capital, we did both.
How much are the bonuses? Or how much did, do you remember how much?
We did last year, I think it was around eight hundred dollars for a full time employee, we did it based on their FTE.
I meant total amount, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Would it take the full three million or half a three million?
It's, uh. I'll have to review it, it's, it's, um, between a million and a.
I know because it's one time funding, we don't want to get into habit of doing it every year. I'm just wondering if, like what Scott said, if there's something we could have go towards the bus garage or the fuel stations and bonuses or something.
Gotcha. I forget the exact amount off, I know it was below one point five million, it was just, it was over a million, but it was under a million and a half, so.
Somewhere around there.
Wide range, but.
And the fueling station was one point seven? Bob, thank you.
I agree with Scott, I think we, I think we need to look at what our capital needs have been, you know. And it, and by all means, if there's, if there's extra money after that, then, you know, I'm all in favor of the bonus and things. But I know, you know, the fueling station was, was, uh. An excess and I also know that there's been a few things, you know, uh, that may have been in excess that we weren't counting on with some of the building that we've been doing already. And I think we need to make sure that we balance there as well, you know. But and I think that, I think that ought to be our first priority.
Did we give you enough direction?
Well, I think that almost has to be more formal, because we're allocating.
We're allocating funds.
Yeah, this isn't just a give him direction, let him spend it.
Yes.
It needs to be board directed spending.
Should we put it on the agenda for next time or do you need to know right now? Or is this enough of a discussion? Cause we'd have to, don't we need a motion to put it on an action item?
We can make it an action.
That's what I'm saying.
Well, I would motion, at least to start the conversation, I motioned that we move the three million dollars to capital.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob to move the three million dollars to capital. Is there any more discussion to that motion? Julia.
So, I mean, I like moving a lot to the capital, because I think we definitely need to do the fueling station. But depending on what other projects we have with inflation, I like the idea of possibly giving bonuses to our staff. If there's enough to do both.
Bob.
And I'd be in agreement with that, Julia. In fact, if you want, I'll amend the motion that, you know, that we pay, that we do the capital for the, the fueling station. And look at the, you know, the extra costs of any of the other projects, but if there is surplus that maybe we could look at a bonus.
I don't think you can.
You can amend the motion, yeah, yeah.
You can amend them.
I I would. I guess I'm just thinking from the public's perspective. We just talked about inflation and that you're right, there's inflation, but so is all of our community and a lot of them are not getting those kind of bonuses that we just talked about. So being sensitive that I would prefer not to amend that motion. But, uh, I understand where you're coming from, because I I I see it both, I can see both ways. But I would prefer not to amend that motion as as it sits, but if if it doesn't pass, that's okay and I can live with that, I'm not.
Thing that we do need for an amendment, though, is we need a second.
Yes.
I guess that's the part I'm confused, though, if Scott made the motion, don't we need to vote on his motion first?
You can amend it and then you vote on the amendment and then the main, and then as amended with the main motion. You don't have to vote on them separately.
Okay. So then I'll second Bob's.
Amendment.
Amendment to the motion.
Can someone help me know what the amendment, so the.
So so the amendment would be, uh, the amendment would be to use the three million dollars towards capital. And any surplus or anything that, once we meet the capital needs there to pay the fueling station or, you know, those are items. That it be looked at towards a bonus.
Okay, and then Camille second. Okay, so Camille seconded that, is there discussion to that amendment? Camille, do you have anything? Okay. Alan.
Well, I, I guess I'm still trying to. Understand, so three million is to capital. And Lark, maybe you can correct me. Does that mean that it can be used toward construction?
It's, it's, I guess in accounting terms, it's actually generated in our general fund, but we transfer it to capital, be used for capital purposes. So.
Which can be, I mean, I'm, I'm just trying.
In general, it's unrestricted, so you can spend how you want.
So if we have three million, because weren't we estimating that we were gonna have a significant shortfall on the?
That's, I guess what I'm, I think what Alan's thinking, we don't have an overage in capital. We know that the schools are running over, so that's why. From my perspective, we're twenty, thirty, whatever it is, million short for the high school, so there's not an excess, that's why.
And that, and I guess that was my point too, is that it doesn't make sense to even talk about additional in the three million. Cause whatever's not used for the fueling station is just gonna be going towards construction costs, but maybe I'm misunderstanding.
And that's what I'm asking too, because I know, so we have this three million, one point seven to the fuel station. And then we're saying whatever's left over, we can look at it. Well, there, if we're putting it into capital, we know there's lots of capital projects. And so I don't, I'm, I don't, I'm confused on what, how would we decide if there's any leftover? Because we're twenty or thirty million short on construction, which is a capital project, isn't it? One of many capital projects. Right? Bob and then Camille.
I I'm not disagree, I'm not disagreeing with that, but, you know, where it is unrestricted, I think we need to be able to look at. And I, and I guess that's what I'm saying, I think we need to be able to look at, or do we do a bonus this year, as Julia stated? And so if if that's, you know. I I, I mean, I guess we could, with the amendment, we could become more specific about saying, well, we'll spend one point seven million dollars on the fueling station and the rest goes to that. I would rather not, I would rather let Lark look at that and see where, you know. And if Lark comes back with a recommendation, I think that's why we ask him for that, is if he comes back with a recommendation and says, this is where we need to put it all, then so be it. Then then that's where it goes. You know, or, you know, uh. But I I understand where you're coming from, for sure.
Well, and I, sorry. I'm just wondering, given, uh, maybe a little bit of that uncertainty, whether it doesn't make sense to have Lark go do that work. Make whatever proposal and then have a motion and a vote instead of kind of this. You know, she feels a little bit nebulous, what exactly we're talking about.
I would agree. I would agree with Alan.
Okay, so we've had discussion to this amended motion. Sounds like we probably need to vote on it, or do somebody want to amend that emotion, that motion without emotion?
Well, I I get, I guess my question would be, it, and I agree with what Alan's saying, I think, I think I agree with that with Alan. He used a couple of words, I didn't know what he was talking about, but. But I think what he's saying is maybe we ought to have Lark look at all this prior to. And and I'm in favor of that if we want to refer it to Lark to look at it and come back with recommendations.
The only question there is, are we leaving it? Are we leaving it, and I don't want to put Lark in an awkward position, right, to try to read the minds of us. We can't even read our own minds sometimes, so, you know, and the the reality is. I mean, we know that we're short on the schools. I mean, we don't have to have Lark go back to the drawing board to know that, we're, we're, we're well short. And if we're, if we're simply saying, we'll use, we'll cover this cost of the fueling station and whatever the details are, we know exactly what that is. And then the balance is used for bonuses, is that what we're suggesting to Lark or? Cause I feel like a little bit in some way, we're leaving it up to Lark to say, well, should he put bonuses in it or not? Because we know that we could absorb it all into capital for the overages on the schools. And and I think, I I just feel like in some way, we're kind of leaving. I I don't want to make Lark be the bad guy or the good guy. I mean, I don't know that that's fair to you, Lark, and it's not, not that you're not willing, but I think that really is our responsibility to be the one that makes that decision. This is my thought.
I don't look at this three million as extra because of the fact that we are short on schools. I mean, short on capital, capital. Or construction, which is a capital project.
You're you're hitting it all on the nail, I, as I was writing my notes, I was thinking along the lines of. If you want this brought back at a future meeting, I'm not, but it'd be nice to carve out how much you would like to see, say, towards this project. Let's say it happens to be a bonus, if that's a priority, we'll carve out so much for the bonus, the rest can go to capital. Or it could all, yeah, I I like the, I like the details as we're pointing out, example of. If the feeling is all to capital, then that, then that answers it. But if, I wanted to point it out, because if there's a feeling that we need to have it for something, and let's say that that just happens to be a, a. In this example, we use bonus, then let's make sure we put what you want in there and then the rest can go to capital. But if the feeling is capital is the biggest priority, then we can go either way.
I think the other point worth mentioning is that we are a board of six tonight and I'm not very good at counting votes, but it seems like it could be a three, three split. In terms of what we want to do, and so I don't know if we want to do a roll call to see or, but it may be a moot point anyway. Because Valerie decided to get sick, so.
Okay, so the motion on the table is the amended motion that one point seven million would go to the fuel station. And the rest would be looked at to see what our priorities are. That it could be a bonus, but could be capital. And we've had discussion, so let's do a roll call. I can call a roll call, right? Okay, all right, uh, Scott.
Uh, nay.
Julia. Yay, um, I say nay.
Nay.
Say yes.
It's a tie, so it fails. So go back to the original motion of, would you repeat it, Scott?
The three million goes to cap.
The three million goes to capital. And who's, and Bob seconded that one? Okay, so. I'll start at the other end this time. Bob.
Yes.
Camille.
Nay.
Alan.
Aye.
I say aye. Scott.
Aye.
For two, motion passes.
That was it, thank you.
Thank you, Lark. Is that the last of yours? Sorry, I didn't mean to like move on.
That was the end.
All right. Okay, construction update. Michael Garcia.
I've been driving up to the junior high more than I ever have and it is so fun. It just, I like get so excited driving past it. Now I don't mind as much going to get my kids when they don't take the bus, but it's awesome.
No, um, no, thanks for letting me share some of this with you really quick, because I'm excited about it too. Just, I'll go in whatever order I put them in. Okay, I was told there's a new clicker and it's supposed to be super awesome. So just a quick update on Ibapa. Like it says, there's, and as it's been for eight months, the school is mostly complete. I was out there this, a couple of times the last week, um, when I was out there a week and a half ago. The power, the three phase power was, the pole was there. And when I was out there a few days ago, um, the power's been brought down in, I was told they have. I was told they have a schedule for inspection on Friday of this week. So at that point, they'll be able to start getting the electrician out there and start actually finishing the building. All those little things that have just been hanging out there that they couldn't do without power. Like it says there, there is a new well that needs to be drilled. We're waiting to hear back from the contractor on that one. The materials have been ordered. The stainless steel casing was about eight weeks out, about four or five weeks ago. So that's about four weeks out till they get the material. They can do the well before they get that, and that's their plan. I'm just waiting to hear back from the contractor of the exact start date.
Mike, how much is the well going to cost? Have they given an estimate on that?
It was, I think, for the well was right around a hundred and eighty thousand. And then a little bit more with some site work and, you know, getting the well to where it goes. So we're, I have to get back and see. Yeah, they've, they have those numbers, but in that, in that, around two hundred thousand for some of the well work.
Can I ask you a question, too? I'm kind of, I might be jumping the gun. Are the kids going to be able to move into the school before the new well is dug?
No, because the only way it gets water is from that well. So we'll have to wait. But they said it's about a week worth of work, once they get out there and have everything. So we're hoping that, as I said, it's trying to get everybody back. And I'm, I have a bunch of questions out there and don't have all the answers back on timelines from the contractors. But there were, we've been talking to them the last several weeks about, okay, it's coming, we got to get you back. Because they've all moved on to other things. And so we've been trying to be proactive and make sure they're aware. Yeah, I called the general contractor again today, and he was still waiting to hear back on the exact start date. It sounded like it was, you know, within the next couple of weeks to start that. Then they'll be waiting for some of that material. But, so I don't have a, a firm date yet, when they'll start that or complete it.
One last question, I promise.
Yeah.
Well, maybe not.
Oh, happy to answer.
So what, what's the plan for the well that's existing in the old school?
The plan is once, because the plan is to demo this old school. And then they have planned to reconnect those lines together to add additional capacity to the existing well. So there's enough to do it now, especially if it happens over the winter season. A lot of that extra capacity goes towards irrigation. So during the school year, when it's just the school running, there's enough water to, you know, drink, flush toilets, do everything they need to. It's just the potential of, you know, with the homes out there and the well, or excuse me, and the irrigation. It was pretty borderline before to run it off of the one, especially adding the homes. If there's people living in there trying to do it. So that's why we've had to add the other well in there. There is a possibility if this well tests well with a higher, you know, enough water, enough volume, we may just be able to use the one new well. But without, we're just not really sure. In talking to people out there, you know, some wells are better than others. We're hoping as we go further the direction we are, it seems like the water generally gets more available. And then just as a little note on there, they also have started setting the homes. We're kind of waiting for some other things to, to get finalized, water being one of those. But last time I was out there, they have some skirting to put on the one and finish some steps, and then it's just connecting those up. You can see some pictures from a couple of weeks ago. Not much has changed, but you can kind of see the old building with the new one. You can see the little wellhouse. It's in that bottom right-hand corner. That's where the wellhouse is. And so the new well will be just outside that to the north and to the west a little bit. Again, some more pictures from inside the building, and then a picture of the, the homes that are, are set. And will be ready shortly after the school's ready. Okay. And then to jump over to twenty wells. We're trying to work around the students and be, you know, as incognito as possible. But we did have the fire marshal come out last Friday, and that was the, the big thing to pass that off. And there were just a couple of small things, but nothing that will really keep us from using that part of the school. So come Monday, they're going to be able to eat in the cafeteria. And then probably a few little things to button up in the kitchen with the health department, just make sure everything's up and running and do a final clean. But, you know, come Monday, they'll be able to use the, you know, eat lunch in the cafeteria. We'll probably be still bringing the food in from the other schools for a week or two. While we just get the health department to sign off on everything. The flooring is almost done. There's just a couple of small sections that they ran out of some glue for, they've been working on. Just listing through that. One of the biggest things that still is going to be outstanding is the playground equipment. We finally at least have a ship date that it'll ship the week of Thanksgiving. And it'll take a week to get here. So they have us tentatively scheduled for the first week of December to get the playground equipment installed. And at that point, there'll be, that's really pretty much everything besides some touch-up things. There will be a lot of little things happening over Christmas break. There's some whiteboards that need adjusted and some things like that. It's just too much of a hassle for the students to, you know, put them out while they try to do that work. So there will be a lot of contractors there over those breaks, holiday, Thanksgiving break as well, to just try to get that buttoned up and, you know, get out of there. Just a couple of pictures from last week. So the kitchen, they were just kind of buttoning up a few things, getting things cleaned up. You can see the gym there. One of the big things left to do in there, there's that folding wall that goes in there. You can kind of see the header about half court. So they're working on that this week and should be done. And, and once that's done, we can get the kids in there to, to eat and get out of the classrooms. Just a couple of pictures of inside, the Liberty Wall with the floor, the hallways being finished. And that was about it. Any questions on twenty wells? I'll stop there for a second, just because it's kind of hot topic. Maybe a lot of questions, a lot of moving parts out there. Okay. Uh, jumping over to the transportation center going on next door. Framing mostly is complete. I was over there this afternoon, and they have half of the, all of the drywall up and all, most of the insulation in there before the inspector can come through, and then they'll put the other half on. So things are going really well there. We did have, with the, the windstorm that happened yesterday, we, we made a mess of the neighborhood, but they've been out picking that up and still have some more work to do. Now, it was crazy enough, there were some panels that blew and actually, and then put a hole in the side of the building with, not sure exactly what hit it, but they'll get that repaired. But yeah, the, the wind has been fun to try to get the roofers up on there. As bad as today was, today's the best day in the last week almost that they could try to get the roof on. But they're working on that now. Like it says there, we're continuing. We met again on the fuel station today to talk about the electrical and, and get all that finalized. We are meeting with, or we have information or calls into the state to try to figure out that procurement. And if they'll allow it to be a state side. I don't have any new information on that yet. Clarissa got me the contact, and they're, we're working back and forth on that right now. One of the biggest things out there now is the, with the early cold temperatures, asphalt is starting to be pretty touch and go if we can get that done. They're basically ready to go. There's a couple of areas near the building, they had to put some bollards and some concrete. That should be done in the next couple of days. And, and besides that, that site's ready. So right now, we're just hoping for a, a good day or two of a little bit warmer weather. We're looking at other options and, and what we can do. But, yeah, the weather, normally you're good till, you know, November's usually pretty safe through Thanksgiving. Then that early snap kind of pushed us back to do the paving out front. So we have the parking lot paved, it's just where the buses go. Is, actually, it's making us a little nervous. But they're ready to go as soon as we get the, the good weather window. Uh, it mentions down there at the bottom, too, the, we placed the order, I think I mentioned this before, but back in February, we placed the order and they gave us a ship date of October for a lot of our main electrical equipment. And then in the summer, they called us back and said, that we, that'll be April. So we have some temporary things that won't, it'll, we'll have to do a little bit of rework to, to get the building powered up before then. But we'll be able to, to function. It's just some, kind of, you know, safely, but kind of rigging up some things that isn't, won't be the final, but. So some pictures, again, this is from a week ago, so things look a lot better or a lot more complete now. They're moving along very well. They've got a lot of the concrete in. Like I said, most of the, the building there now has insulation and the, the sheet rock up. And you see the parking lot there, it was paved. There's the shop that they're working on the roof now, that they were working on the in-ground lifts that day. And just kind of showing the, the prep that they were doing on the back parking lot. And then just another picture of an interior. All right, on to the Deseret Peak High School. So as you've probably seen, they are starting to lift up the tilt panel walls. The, the tenth of last month, they lifted up their first ones. The first part of this month, they lifted up the ones in the gym. And they're working on those. Like it says there, about every two to three weeks, they'll be, they'll lift the panels, then they'll work on the ones, once they get out of the way. Then they'll lift up those and just kind of have that sequence and move around. So by the end of the winter into spring, pretty much all the tilt panels will be up. If you go over there now, you can see the mason is infilling those. They're, they're coming right along. Like I said, the, the block there did, because of the early concrete short, or the concrete shortages early this year, uh, it did delay our order of block by about three weeks. So they made up some of that. It came a little earlier than they were hoping, they, they had thought. So like I said, right now, there at the bottom, with all the little concrete delays, the block delays, it's pushed the completion date back about a month. We're hoping we can make up some of that as we move along, but just trying to keep everybody up to date. But that still has us completing it in May. So we're, we're trying to gain some of that back and we'll keep you up to date. But, yeah, you lose a week and, I think it's a twenty-seven-page schedule that they've, they prevent, or they've prepared. And so it's very thorough and very in-depth. And so we're looking at ways always to, to shave some time off there. But everything has a place and an order to, to get done. But, so overall, things are coming along really well. Just a couple of pictures from there. You can see those gym tilt-up panels. So where I'm looking from, kind of looking through the auxiliary gym towards the main gym. And then there's the, the back of the stadium wall, the bleachers will be above that. There's just a, what the interior masonry wall will look like, that's one of the corridors in the hallways. And that was them backfilling a, a different retaining wall, similar to what they had for the, the bleachers. And you can see that in the middle of the building, there's this tall shaft, that's the elevator. So if you drive past there and see that, that's what that's for. Um, and just, I thought that was kind of a cool picture of the, the tilt-up, the board form that they use. So that's what all those black panels look like that, um, once you get up closer. Just in a quick overall site view, you can kind of see where they were at the end of last month. Um, they've, like I said, they've lifted a couple of walls since then. With the bad weather, I hadn't been able to get a, a little more updated, uh, site. And then jumping on to Stansberry really quick, there's not too much to talk about yet. We're meeting about every week with different engineers and different district teams. And, you know, things are going well. The seventy, it mentions there, we have a fifty percent construction set. The seventy-five percent set is due this Thursday. So, yeah, like I said, not much to there, just kind of working to try to get everything out to bid. Still early this next year, we will do a pre-qualification. So any sub, or any general contractor that wants to bid has to be pre-qualified to make sure that it's somebody who's qualified to build a school and they have experience in this. And so that'll go out the end, towards the end of this year with only those ones who are successful at that portion being allowed to bid. Okay, so that's all I had. If there are any other questions about any of the other projects?
Nope, I don't think so. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, uh, moving on, Board of Education Roundtable. Any committee meeting reports or anything? I'll Scott, start with Scott? No? Camille?
Uh, the only thing I was going to tell is tomorrow night, we have the student gala for Tulac Tech, um, their student of the year award. So pay attention to social media. They'll post whoever the student is that wins and stuff. It'll be a great night.
Okay. Bob?
I, I only had a couple of things. One is, uh, and, and West Elementary's already left, but they had, they had their grandparents today. And, uh, the way they ran their lunches, I got to spend quite a bit of time there, because I had kids strung, you know, grandkids strung out throughout the, the grade levels. But I want you to know, it was, it was a very well-received program. They had, I talked to one grandparent, a, a set of grandparents that drove from Downey, Idaho to come down and eat, you know, a twenty-minute lunch with their grandkids and things. And so it was really nice. I, I was going to compliment the staff. The other thing is, is I would like, you know, I, as I was telling Melissa, I got to spend some quality time with Angie the other day. And we went, uh, over to Alpine School District and looked, the scheduling committee for elementary and looked at some, uh, possibilities of maybe changing some schedules and things to create some time. And it was very, it was very, it was a very good pro, uh, very, very interesting to see what they did. Uh, in, in a lot of ways, uh, being a classroom teacher, a lot of what we've seen made a lot of sense to me. So I'm looking forward to her report. I think that'll be coming, forthcoming or whatever. But, uh, so I, I appreciate, appreciate her taking us over there, so. That's it.
All right, thank you. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our action items. We'll, uh, is there a lot of? Bob, sorry. Oh, were you, no, I just want to make sure I didn't miss something. Okay, let's go ahead and move on to our policies, our action items. Uh, the first one is revised policy five zero three two. Looks like, um, it's a model policy and with Casey Chris.
Good evening, everybody. How we doing? Good, I hope. So a little background, this is a requirement that we update this every three years. You can see the date. COVID struck right at the end of that, so there is a waiver. That pushed us through a couple of years there, so that's where we're at today. We had a committee of Lisa Johnson, Chantel Cowan, Kelly Staten, Sarah Martinez, our dietitian, and Morgan Rivera, myself, uh, to go over this wellness policy committee. And this is kind of what we've updated. We've looked at Canyon's district and a few other ones. It's ran through USB Child Nutrition Office, our local Tulac County Health Department offices for their guidance and suggestions. And this is kind of where we've left, so if you have any questions, let me know.
I have one question.
Yeah.
So down on like E, where it's your, um, District Nutrition and Wellness Advisory Committee.
Yeah, yep.
So like, it says, um, on number two, the following stakeholders will be invited to participate.
Yes.
And, and so you've got like all of the, um, members that should be there. You've got TEA members, teachers, and members of the public, but you don't really have any classified?
Yeah, I, I don't know how that got left off.
I feel like they should be also invited.
I didn't do all the typing, I promise.
I mean, I get, some teachers aren't TEA, so I didn't know if you meant to break that out in terms of it could be any.
Yeah, I don't, I think we all missed that, so. I'm glad we, I was hoping for a first read approval, but we can edit that. Yeah, no, it's just all-encompassing to have Smini and everybody invited, public, you know. And we sent it out, had Marie help me send it out to everybody. This is who we had come back that was interested. Yeah, it's required every three years, but, you know, things change and new things come up every year. So we're planning on looking at it every year, just to make it easier, so it don't have to have all these changes. Because this is now around, going on five years since it's been touched, so. No, I definitely think that should be updated and added in there. What else?
So you're looking for a second read?
Sure, yeah.
Or?
Can I make a motion, actually?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve revised policy five zero three two Wellness and Nutrition for Implementation with the change in Section F to include a classified employee.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Alan to approve. Gosh. Um, revised policy five zero three two Wellness and Nutrition with the addition in the appropriate section to include. Oh goodness. To include classified employees. Uh, any discussion of that? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Casey.
Thank you, have a good night.
Okay, new policy, recognition of employee associations. Dr. Mark Ernst is our point of contact.
Yes, thank you. Happy to have this, uh, policy to this point, or this, uh, new policy to this point. Just a little bit of history. We started on this policy, I think, last March with our classified association. And then last month brought in- Uh with our classified association and then last month brought in our certified association. For input, uh some. Much of the policy is the same as what we've had, we've included what we've done in the past with our associations. We also leaned heavily upon other school districts, namely the NIBO School District, uh in how they. Recognize their associations, a couple items of note that are new to us is uh. Section A, number seven, the meet and confer. Definition and what that means for our associations. Also, the if an association does not have, is not recognized by whatever the the percent. Uh is determined, that that meet and confer status would kick into would kick in and we would follow that. Also, that uh associations, if they're below the fifty percent, they are still recognized for assistance. For assisting employees with discipline, grievances, employee recognition, uh and the meeting conferring uh. Process, and then probably the biggest uh difference in how we have. Done this in the past is we actually spell it out, well, this is not, this is new for Twilla County School District. And we leaned heavily upon NIBO and their policy, uh and Dr. Nielsen, their superintendent down there. We looked at, you'll notice that uh as written here. The the denominator in the equation is different for certified and classified, certified is a point five oh and above. And the classified is a point seven five, uh we looked at everything from all employees to. Half FTE, two point seven five FTE, uh part of the reason for the point seven five in classified employees is looking at. Who their members are, the majority of their members, uh traditionally for years have always been at point seven five FTE. Of note, though, that is only for the purpose of determining recognition of the association. Um it should not be construed in any way that if you are for certified, if you're. If you are, if the for cap for recognition purposes, only counting point five or for classified, only counting point seven five. That does not mean either association only represents point five and above or point seven five and above. They represent all certified and all classified employees, uh so that's the history on this. I'm actually pretty happy overall with where this policy is. And uh the work of the different associations that we got to this point, so any questions or comments about this proposed policy?
Julia?
Um I I I really like the policy, I think, I think that it's done good, um having those uh groups. Have input, but I'm just wondering, like, on the leave for the association officers. So for the officers, it says um not more than fifteen days, and then for the. Pres- is it the president, fourteen hours per week?
Yeah.
So is, should they both be an hour, like, I mean, like, are we saying it has to be a whole day or?
Yeah, that that's actually exactly how our policy is written right now.
I I, cause I mean, officers could take like two or three hours to do.
And and I think part of the different, part of the reason for that is because um the certified teacher and. Uh especially for years where it was a secondary teacher, it was possibly calculated hourly because of uh. The class period, you know, they would get an additional prep and and so it was calculated that way, whereas with a. Classified employee, uh it was just done up to days, uh because it's harder to. For instance, if a if a teacher, if if especially if the president, for years, we had. It's a little bit different now with Becca being the the TEA president, for years, the TEA president was a secondary teacher. So they were, they taught a fewer classes. With a classified employee, let's say the classified employee president is a bus driver, it's much more difficult to get a bus driver to come in for. One hour uh to do that bus route, so that's why there, my guess is that's why there was a difference historically speaking.
That's the amount of time I know is called out in state statute. Have we validated the times here with the state statute? Cause I remember that was something that came out about hmm six or seven years ago, that that it actually calls out the amount of time that's allowed. For those officers, and that's in state law, so I would suggest that we follow what the state statute says on that. And that we don't, I don't think our old policy was consistent with the state statute, so I think we need to follow what the state says.
Just about six or seven years ago, though, I do remember, cause as Camille uh pointed out, maybe Dr. Ernst was talking about. Me being the secondary president, you know, but uh anyway, I do remember Scott, about six or seven years ago, there was. An adjustment to the policy to Matt's match statute. But I think I think that's a great thing, but can I ask? I I have no problem with the the formula, but let the formulas that you've presented, but. The the concern I have, I guess, is if they pay the, you know, let's say it's a. Either one, you know, they're below that fifty percent or they're below the seventy five percent, they count towards it, you know, they'll count towards their percentage, correct? But if they don't meet the criteria of point five or point seven five, then we exclude them. You see what I'm is, am I, am I?
I I know what you're saying.
Am I looking at that wrong?
What? What I think you're saying, what I think you're saying is, you can't have it both ways, you can't, if if they're less than, for argument's sake, it's a classified. A certified teacher and they're point two five for some reason, if they're part of, like, you can't count them on the numbers, on the deno- on the numerator and then. Not count them in the denominator.
That's correct, and they do not, they do not.
That's the question I'm at. Just to make sure that.
Right, so if if uh.
Looking at that right.
If a point two five classified employee is a member, a member of the of the SPOT SD Association. They do not count toward the total getting to fifty percent.
They don't count for them or against them.
That's correct.
Correct, that's that's all I'm asking.
That's correct, yeah.
So, but I do have a a concern with, I there's been a lot of talk even during the public comments about the. That they're, that we're representing all the all the staff, and I just don't un. It's not consistent with what we're suggesting, because especially when it comes to classified. Uh a large number of our staff are between halftime and three quarter time. And so if the goal is to represent all of the staff, then they need to rep, then that needs to be in the calculations, I I. I I don't know how we can say they represent all the staff, but we're not going to include them as part of the calculation for that association. It 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 just seems inconsistent, that if we're saying we're gonna represent them all, then we need to say they're representing them all. And and I would suggest that over time, a- and it's just human nature. That a full time or three quarter time individual is going to be more sensitive to benefits. And a halftime who's not eligible for benefits is not going to be sensitive to that, it it's not a concern. And so what during those negotiations, they're not able, I mean objectively. You know, if if it's pay in pocket or benefits, um those that are full time are obviously gonna favor benefits. And and those others are gonna, those pay, those hourly rates. And and consistently over the last couple of years, we've seen dramatic increases in hourly rates for our class, for our classified staff. Because we haven't been negotiating, because we haven't necessarily put all that into benefits, and. So I would think that at a minimum, we should be consistent on whatever that is. And and using point five for certified, I think should be, at a minimum should be point s- five for classified. Uh I I don't know why we would do anything other than that. The other concern I have, just and throw it out there, is I I'm still really struggling with the concept of. What, I gotta find it. Why if we're not recognizing the association. That they, that we would s- would meet and con- that whole meet and confer thing, and it's in. It's in number two, I might note it said to myself, now I can't find it. Oh, uh suppose the association fails to receive fifty percent majority, um it's, the association is still recognized for assisting employees. And and I think the better solution is that we just allow, a- any employee can have someone come with them for. Discipline, grievances, et cetera, but I don't understand, I I'm still struggling with the idea. That we're recognizing association effectively, the only thing we're not doing is negotiating, and what? Why, why are we, how come we don't? There's still the old TESPA, so it feels like with this, we would have to still call those folks up and invite them to, right?
And and I actually would, I I mean, if 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 TESPA called me up, whoever those eight people are. And wanted to meet with me, or if a group of PE teachers from Stansberry High. Called me up and wanted to meet and confer, I absolutely would meet with them, hear hear what their. Complaint is or what their suggestion is, or what their praise is for the school district, uh the thing that I like about the meet and confer process. Um it says that the district will determine what, if any, action will be taken regarding any issue raised in such meetings. Uh I actually think the meet and confer process levels the playing field for all employees. Uh gives any employee the opportunity to say, here's, here's a a way we can meet and confer with our district leadership. The district may do nothing with it, but at least we as a group of employees, whatever that group is. Have an opportunity to formally come and say, this is our concern.
But would, to your point, we would do that anyway, I don't know that we have to call it out as part of the association, cause like you said.
But why would we not?
Why would we, I it opens, it opens ourselves up to a lot, and especially number two there, where it says, suppose association fails to take. In that case, the association is still recognized.
Yeah.
For assisting, and and if you want to have the meet and confer, maybe, but that section two seem kind of. Guts the reason for having an association.
Well.
Other than the negotiation part.
So if you don't want that in there, then we also need to go in and change another policy where it says they are allowed to bring someone with them.
Yeah, and and adjust that, that that makes sense to me.
And maybe I can shed some light on this, and this is just, this is just past history, okay, but I don't have a, I don't have a. As big issue, I guess, Scott, with the meet and confer, because that'll, I I'm agreeing with the superintendent. Because I think that allows other groups or other, it could be a history, it could be a history group, it could be anybody that just wants to have a meet and confer. They're not going to be negotiating, they're going to be talking more about concerns, as far as who represents who. And and Becky will have to nod if this is still the case or not, cause it's been a long time since I dealt with this, but you know, uh as as. A past TEA president, one of the things that I found is it really didn't matter whether they were a member or not. They could still request TEA because of their affiliation with UEA and NEA. Part of our requirement was is we represented even where we were the negotiating uh group. But you're at, but the other thing is, a- and and I, you know, uh it does not matter, I mean. They don't have to ask for association help, they can ask anybody for help, they can, you know, uh. I should say anyone, uh you know, I guess, without going to the Board of Education, you know, cause I don't think the board can step in and represent people. In a grievance or something like that, but they can ask another teacher, they can ask, you know, an a person from the district office, whoever they want. So I think, I think, I, as I read that, Scott, the the thing that I, I guess I like about it. Is it at least allows problems to be be talked about, and you know, I I would rather see problems talked about. Than grievances filed, I guess, is is what I'm saying, and so I I don't have a problem with the meet and confer. I do, I I agree with you a hundred percent, when we get into monetary and we start talking about all those things, it has to be, it has to be represented by. The association, who is, who's recognized as an association, if not, then I think, you know. As we've done in the past, I think that's just basically the survey like what was done last year, or some means. Where all employees can give input if they're not a a represented, but I think, I think the meet and confer, like I said, I think that is. I think that's just a good way of maybe uh not having to deal with grievances, because if not. I think you're going to be ending up dealing with a lot of single grievances or group grievances and things like that, and I think that's. That's a good way to mediate that.
Confer probably isn't something that I would die on, but what about number two, where if they fail to obtain obtain the majority? You know, that that's still.
I gotta get to number two.
That they still are representing them on everything except for. Negotiations, really, it's everything except.
But see, but see, then you, but then you get into the same thing as, they could ask anybody and and they may as well, if they want, you know, if they want to ask. Because like with TEA, and I can only state TEA, folks, I can't state uh classified, cause I've never been a member of that, but with TEA. There were certain stipulations, if they were a non-member, they, TEA has certain things that they can do to help a non-member. And they have certain things that they cannot do to help a non-member, without going into specifics of what they can and cannot do. I, again, I don't see a problem with that, because again, it's more of just allowing. Employees to have representation, which I'm an advocate of, because I think in order to get due, in order for employees to have fair due process, they have to have. Representation, and if it comes from leadership that may not be able to negotiate monetarily for them. I'm, I guess I'm okay with that.
I'm curious, Bob, what about the the numbers?
The numbers, uh. It, that concerns me a little bit, because I, but it it concerns me less now that it's not counting for them or against them. It's, you know, I I don't think it's helping, I'll just be honest with you, I don't think it's helping your cause getting membership. Because uh when you get that threshold higher than tho- the those people, which Scott is very correct. A lot of those folks will fall below that three quarters, I think that uh just gives them a reason to say. Sorry, we're not members, cause if we don't count for you, we don't count against you, so I I don't see it helping you at all, so that's just. My opinion, though.
Would you like to see them both at point five, I I am not an expert in this area, so I'm kind of, you guys have been on long enough. If, to me, I liked, my brain thinks, well, if we're doing for point five for certified, why wouldn't we do point five for classified? But that's, when you looked at NIBO, Mark, what was NIBO, was there's?
Yeah, NIBO was point five for both certified and classified.
Okay.
And I could, I think.
I can see the reasoning for that.
Yeah, as do I, it certainly seems more equitable.
Yeah, I think I. I'd like to, I mean, anyways, that's my thought on that, is I'd I'd prefer. That, so I'm. Looking for a motion, Bob or Scott, or or anyone can make a motion or.
We'll make Alan make a motion, cause Alan's always good at thoughtful insight.
He's got a computer problem over here, so he's.
I ask a question before you proceed, maybe I'm misreading it, cause I I heard here, but. It never really defines a properly registered, I'm going back to the math and the equation we have there. Um if you actually read the language, not what's in the formula. Says the numerator of all association members who are properly registered, numerator, doesn't.
I I would.
Doesn't have any language in there about the exclusion.
So I think the, I think you're gonna have to define properly registered as individuals who have had dues withheld. During that month and are working more than halftime. As written and three quarter time, it it has to have those two, they're not par- they they don't count if they're less than, for this argument, twenty five percent, right? I mean, quarter time, if they're quarter time, they're not properly registered, they don't count, even if they're having dues withheld.
So section C B says the calculation of association membership is determined by the by the number of certified or classified employees. On the appropriate salary schedule, having membership dues taken out of their paychecks.
But as that's written, it doesn't say anything about them, what Bob's concerned, i- it they're on that salary schedule, they're, but they're quarter time employee. So they're point, they're point two five, they're on that salary schedule, they're having, if they're paying dues.
So then we could change it to say, the calculation of associated membership is determined by the number of certified or classified employees above point. determined by the number of certified or classified employees above point, above half FTE on the appropriate salary schedule.
Yeah, it has to include that.
I think what I was saying, Mark, in a roundabout way, is it, it could be interpreted that everybody counts who is a member, but it does, in the numerator, but in the denominator, they are excluded because of FTE.
Which is why this is always an issue, right?
Yeah, I see what you're saying, Mark, I, I follow you on that one. Yeah, that, that, we can clean that language up, that's relatively simple, but yeah, I see what you're saying.
It just has to be consistent.
Yeah, yeah, I understand that.
So really, it's, so why don't we, just to, I'll make a motion, but only to a point, which is, I would, I make a motion that we make C1C read that the denominator will be point five for both certified and classified. So I'll just kind of piecemeal it, I, just that one point that I think's.
And it'd basically be the same for the numerator as well, point five, so then they, they don't, they count the same.
Only counting those.
Right, yeah.
Second.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob, to approve the policy for Section C, little C, C1CI, no, one, that the denominator for both is point five.
Correct.
Is there discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
Motion passes.
So with that kind of point, Bob, I, I, I mean, before we make a motion, just, I, I'm, the meet and confer makes, yeah, okay, I, I have a lot of heartburn about to see about if they failed to obtain that. I, I just don't see why we have that if we still can have the meet and confer. I, I'm not comfortable with that, but if, if the sense of the board is not that, I won't make a motion to, to strike that, and so I, I don't know that I want to make the motion, just because I recognize I may be the minority. So I don't, you know, if there's strong feelings the other way, go ahead and make that motion, and?
I think part of the reason for the desire to have that in there is because it was very ambiguous before as to what would happen if you fell below fifty percent. Is it everything, you're just gone completely, you don't get a say in anything, you're, you're not even allowed to shake hands with employees at the retirement dinner, you're not, you, you just can't do anything, you're completely cut off. And what that provision applies is it, it says, if for some reason, association falls below fifty percent, here's what you still, here, here's what you're able to do as a non-recognized association. I, I think that's the reason, is just to, what, what can we do if we do fall below fifty percent? What's our role in the school district if we fall below fifty percent?
So before a motion's made, just so that I have this straight in my mind, superintendent on C1B, you're just going to clean up that language that will say it hasn't, you know, the fifty percent, so the numerator and the denominator are both fifty.
Yeah, so, so all employees that we're using for calculation are, yeah, so, so a point five employee that happens to be a member of either association does not count, only, only?
Anybody below a point five.
Anybody below point five doesn't count, correct, yes.
It doesn't go against them.
All right, I'm gonna take a stab at this. I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the new policy. Wait, are we approving it for implementation, are we doing first draft? I'm seeing heads shaking.
There's, there's a lot of changes that need to be made, I think you gotta have to bring it back.
Mark's giving me the evil eye.
I am happy to do whatever.
Well, we've already approved that one portion.
We need to change some verbiage.
And changing some verbiage, that can be in the, in the motion. I think it can be in the motion and get it done.
I'm gonna go ahead and make a motion that we approve the new policy recognition of employee associations with the necessary changes to reflect in C1B to not include employees point five and below in calculations.
And the discussion about aligning the leave?
Oh, and you're right, and aligning the leave, because I did find that online, it's ten days.
Yeah.
I'm gonna email it to you later. And that's it.
Okay, I'm just looking for a second.
Second.
It's been moved by Camille, seconded by Bob, to approve the new policy recognition of employee associations with the cleanup verbiage in C, C12?
C1B.
C1B, and also?
Section F.
Section F.
Section what?
F.
F, and Section F. Is there any more discussion to this motion?
Well, and G, it's F and G.
F and G. Is there, oh, Julia.
I'm just thinking, if we're gonna clean it all up, and can't we just bring it back and see it all cleaned up and fixed, so we know it's exactly what it's gonna happen? Can we bring it to a second reading?
Do we need to amend, it depends on if you want to amend the motion.
I will withdraw my second, I, I agree with Julia, so.
All right. All right, we'll bring it back for a second reading?
This is, yes, actually, a second read on this one, yeah. It's about the eighth read overall.
Right, but it's only a second read on this one.
Second read on this one, yeah.
Okay.
Now we have a second read?
So we will move this policy to the second, a second, oh, I don't have a second.
I'll second that.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Bob, to move this new policy recognition of employee associations to a second read with the changes that were talked about. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Madam Chairman, I say something, just to our associations, I know it may be a little bit frustrating to see this not fully passed and come to a second reading, however, that is really just to make sure I do my job. It really is, I mean, you can see, you can see the direction this is gonna go, and what it's gonna look like when it's approved, but just in order to keep everything straight in our heads, it's easier for us to do a second read, clean it up, and look at it that way, so.
So I do have a question, then, kind of on that same line. Since we didn't approve this policy for implementation, we are not going to retire policy four zero zero one or four zero zero two, correct?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. Revised policy one zero zero three, board member elections and reappointments is for a third read.
All right, so hopefully you've captured the changes there, a lot of color, as it goes back and forth between reads, but I think we've been able to capture the information in regard to the filing deadlines and things like that, the codes have all been aligned correctly with Patrick, so is there any questions that I can answer?
I like this lots better. We're not trying to re spell out the code that's already in code somewhere else. So we don't decide if it's, whatever the filing time is, we just say, we're gonna default to what their filing says. I like that better.
Yeah, that's clear.
I agree. Because they'll change it next year. You know, then, then our policies, I will see, so it's just, I like that better.
Yep, it's easier to refer, to refer back to state code that way.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve revised policy one zero zero three, board member elections and redistricting for implementation.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Julia, to approve revised policy one zero zero three, board member elections and reappointments. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Revised policy one zero zero five, Terry?
Okay, so what you have in front of you is a combination of one zero zero five, one zero zero six, one zero zero seven, and one zero one seven. Basically, what we did is we took all of the sections that had anything to do with board meetings and put them all in this one, so that, and added the, the code changes from model policy. So it, it does appear to be a little bit longer, especially once you hit J with the agendas, and, and therefore the rest of that is green, but that is basically putting those together in there. And if, correct me if I'm wrong, Jackie, I believe we put the, those other sections in there, in their true form and current policy, so that you can see them as how we pulled them in. Does that make sense, or do you have any questions I can answer?
So you just actually just copied and dropped in, like, the electronic meeting policy that we already had, or whatever, and you just put all into this one?
Put it all into one.
And you didn't change any of that?
The only additions were for the code changes, because that's, they, they needed some updating from twenty nineteen to twenty twenty-two.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Question first, Terry, you're, you're asking, you want this to be moved on to a second read?
Second read is fine, basically, just keep in mind that once we do, and we incorporate these all together, then that will be retiring the other three in a, in another board meeting. So whether it be for implementation, that's fine, if you want it for a second read, to take on it, you can do that.
I'm, I move that we implement revised policy zero, one zero zero five.
I'll second.
Moved by Bob, seconded by Camille, to implement revised policy one zero zero five. Is there any discussion to that motion?
Since we're on a board meeting of amendments, do we want to add to that, and that we retire one zero zero six, one zero zero seven, and one zero one seven?
We can do that as a friendly amendment, so yeah.
Yeah.
Because we're on a roll.
Okay, so that's a amendment? Okay, so it's been, so do I repeat?
I would just include it in the motion.
Okay. Okay, so it's been moved by Bob, seconded by Camille, with an amendment to approve board policy one zero zero five, and retire policy one zero zero six, policy one zero zero seven, and policy one zero one seven for, what do you call that, for retirement?
For retirement of those three.
Implementation and retirement. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, revised policy four zero zero five, Winn Porter, for recruitment and selection. This is our fourth read.
Thank you, I just want to bring you up to speed where we're at on that, because it is the fourth read on four zero zero five. Out of four zero zero five, we have a new policy that we've taken employee transfers, employee temporary assignments, and reduction in force out of recruitment and selection, because it just didn't feel right to be in, looking for recruitment and selection and finding involuntary transfers and that in there, so we, I have pulled that out and put in the new policy, employee transfers, temporary assignments, and reduction in force. The reduction in force comes out of four zero zero seven, which just a few months ago, you approved four zero zero seven, but that felt like it ought to be with the transfers and involuntary. Nothing was changed, it's completely pulled out of four zero zero seven and moved into the new policy, reduction in force on, on this one here. Within the four zero zero five, previously, in our first three readings, we had approved with wording changes, the transfers, temporary assignments, within this reading itself. So on the new policy, I pulled, I made those changes and put them in the way that you'd asked. Then I took last month's suggestions in four zero zero five and made those changes that you had asked for, for last month. So any questions? I know that was quick, and seemed like a lot, because it's dealing with three policies, but I think it, overall, it really cleans it up and makes it quick, so that a principal or administrator's not looking at three different places and trying to figure out, okay, what's this, this, we're just trying to make sure that we get this right as we're going forward, and we'll find something that we'll have to change, but for right now, it feels good.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion, or any questions for Winn?
Could I ask one?
Yes.
And I'm sorry, I didn't point this out to Winn earlier, so, he's answering off the cuff. I, I wrote a policy a little while back where they didn't like the word LEA in it. And I'm curious, in policy four thousand and five, let me find out where it was at. F?
F1.
F1, why did we change that to LEA?
At the quick look at that, the screening committee, I'm not at all the screening committees when interviews happen at the school level or the department levels, and so it would be the administrator over that level that would oversee that screening committee. I'm, I'm not, I'm not invited to all of the, all of those to make sure that happens, and so that's why I took the human resource director out of that.
My, my full logic, where you see where I'm coming from, is we had a policy where we changed all LEAs to Twella County School District, regardless of what position we assigned that to, it is our responsibility. I don't know that we like the word LEA in there, because it's ours.
Because LEA is just the generic form for, for the templates from the state, meaning, anything that says LEA, we should really say Twella County School District.
Superintendent, or designee.
Yeah, but not just generic, LEA is kind of like, we just copy and paste it from the state.
So does someone want to make a motion without changing it, or do we just want to approve it? I'm looking for, I'm looking for something, you guys.
Okay, I'll make.
You guys need to bring chargers.
I'll make a motion that we approve four zero zero five, recruitment and selection, with the change of, changing LEA to Twella County District.
Okay.
Moved by Julia, seconded by Camille, to approve policy four zero zero five, recruitment and selection, with the exception of changing LEA to Twella County School District. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Policy four zero zero seven, conditions and requirements of employment, this is a first read. Winn, thank you, again.
Hey, this is the one that all we took out of it was reduction in force, was, was removed out of that and put into the new policy. Everything else stayed the same.
So you just need a motion, because we made a change to it, of course, right? All right, so I'll go ahead and, if you're ready for a motion?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that we approved revised policy four zero zero seven, conditions and requirements of employment for implementation.
I'll second that.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Julia, to approve revised policy four zero zero seven for implementation. Any discussion to that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. New policy, employee transfers, termination and reduction in force, this is a first read. Winn Porter, again, thank you.
Employee transfers, temporary assignments, and reduction in force.
Oh, yes, sorry.
And here is where we pulled, put in reduction in force out of four zero zero seven, and then we pulled the transfers and temporary assignments out of four zero zero five, with the corrections that was made in the previous three readings.
Okay, so this is for implementation, is what you're looking for?
I'll make a motion that we approve the new policy, employee transfers, termination, and?
Oh, no, you.
Employee transfers, temporary assignments, right?
And reduction in.
And reduction in force for implementation.
Correct.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Alan, to implement new policy, employee transfers, temporary assignments, and reduction in force for implementation. Any dis, any discussion to that? new policy, employee transfers, temporary assignments, and reduction in force for implementation. Any just, any discussion of that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Thank you, Winn.
Thank you.
Um, okay, TSSA plans, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. I believe these are the ones that were left off last time. Is that correct?
I'll make a motion that we approve the TSSA plans that we have in front of us, the four of them, um, for two, twenty, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three.
Moved by Camille, seconded by, moved by Julia, seconded by Alan to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three TSSA plans. Um, is there any discussion of that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes. Six point nine, or yes, positive behavior plans. Matt Jackson, do you, oh, Julie, we will get Julie. I mean, there was a lot of these. It was, it was.
I'd like to oppose that we review them individually and vote on each one.
I did.
Did you?
I did.
Good. Yeah, I mean, a lot of them are much the same, but they all have their own unique.
But I appreciate that they were all in the same format. That, did you know that? They were all in the same format, which was awesome.
And then next time, they're all gonna be on the same spreadsheet, and that will be even better.
Oh. That's a suggestion for next year, isn't it? So.
Scott will read all of them if they're in a spreadsheet for.
I can do that. I can do that.
Well, I, I like the fact that all of the individual programs that the individual school, I mean, like, a lot of them were the same, you know, the red ribbon and all that, but down at the bottom, like, there was differences between like Eagle Hour and
Right.
Um, just all kinds of different little things that they'd added.
Definitely, yes, and they all made them unique to their own school that would fit best for them to implement things that were under the law. Um, it's really to target all substance abuse prevention and implement positive behavior supports. And um, it was funding that, and, and a law put out House Bill fifty-eight in two thousand twenty. And um, so really, it's put before you for your stamp of approval. Can I ask just a quick question? Is this for every year, or do you have to come back and get these approved every year? I have to come back every year. Hmm, fun. Yeah. Can I make a question?
That's a lot of work for principals.
Yeah, and really, like, we really tried to be nice to principals and put together a template that then they could use and make unique to their own situation. Um, but yeah, last year probably was a bigger, heftier lift than this year because they really either just said, we're continuing with this, or we're adding a little bit, or taking away a little bit, so they're much the same as they were last year. A motion that we approve the positive behavior plans for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year.
Moved by Camille, seconded by Bob to approve the positive behavior plans for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. Is there any discussion of that motion? All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Hey, and I'll put together a spreadsheet for next year. Thanks.
Okay, open enrollment boundary closures. Um, Dr. Sarah Jarnigan and Brian Betcher Beckerini. I know your name. I'm so sorry, I did, it's nerve wracking up here. Give me a minute.
Note to self, do not get your stuff in late or you're last on the agenda. So we are proposing that we close the Twill High and Stansberry High boundaries. Um, statute says we can do so at ninety percent of the maximum capacity, and you can see on the far right side that Stansberry High is at hundred and thirteen percent, Twill High is at ninety-five percent. I do wanna make a note and be sure that everybody knows that current students who are there would not be required to leave, and then DLI would still be going as transfers.
My concern with that is, what she said, it makes sense, but it's the, it's the sibling problem. And, and I did the math. We're, we're not gaining much. I mean, the net, if you close the two of them, if you subtract the difference between what you lose from Twill and you gain from Stansberry, vice versa, I mean, the net um, twenty-two, twenty-three would be twenty-four students. I mean, it, it's not like you net out a ton. And when you start to split those families, right, if, if they're going out of boundary and the, the older siblings are already there, but if we close the boundaries, now the younger siblings go into the other school, it for the net gain and the fact that Desert Peak is, I guess it's a few years out, but I, I guess I'm not sure that it's worth the twenty-some-odd students net gain. That's my thought.
Just in the comparison of the sheet that we received up on our desk, I didn't see a lot of difference between last year and this year as far as what we, you know, and last year we chose not to uh, and I think it was for the same reasoning, Scott. So I I, I'm, I'm kinda in that camp. I'm not, I'm not so sure that's the direction I'd like to go because of the siblings and of some of those situations, so. Cuz I, it looks to me, just looking at the chart, it looks to me like a lot of this is being really handled by I guess the area directors as you approve and, and or deny that. I think that, I think you're handling the situation cuz it doesn't look to me like it's really gaining traction either way, and so I just, I, I'm not in favor of, of that.
It's not that we don't appreciate. I guess from my perspective, what Bob is, I'm just feeling like this is not a hill to die on for twenty stu- if, if this was a hundred and fifty students net.
Okay, so my, oh, Julia, do you have something? Oh, okay. My question to that is, though, I'm curious because this is on our agenda, and I don't think it would, you'd be coming to us because of twenty-four students, because historically, like, we've had this discussion in the past, and that's why I, that's why I was saying, what are those numbers at Stansberry and Grantsville, or Stansberry and um, Twill, excuse me? And so that's what I'm saying. There's gotta be more to why it's on the agenda and they're asking to be closed, cuz really, to the more I thought about it, it's really just a closure for one school year, correct? Cuz Desert Peak will be open twenty-four, twenty-five.
Twenty-five, twenty-six. So for the Stansberry area, looking at a hundred and thirteen percent of the max capacity already, and just thinking about growth, and I realize twenty-four students maybe isn't a lot, but over time, you're gonna, yeah, over time, you're gonna.
But it's twenty-four families that are all worked up, and it's only twenty.
Could we implement families?
Well, and, and you know, you can give it back to us and say, hey, here's, you know, here's what we'll support, because as you've pointed out, we have been managing it, um, you know, on our own and and with your direction, if that's how you want us to continue to manage it, we can and consider families, and that's, you know, we do this past year, we did try to say no to everyone except extenuating circumstances, so siblings could be an extenuating circumstance.
Can I ask a clarifying question? So we have what appears to be four years of data. At least on the sheet that I have, I don't have my laptop on, but um, the requests look quite similar in terms of overall numbers. Uh, you've referred to the a hundred and thirteen percent uh, capacity. Has that increased? Uh, we don't have that number on our sheets.
Has the capacity increased?
Right, I'm just trying to figure out. So we've gone four years in a row, very similar requests.
Right.
Um, you know, seventy-three thirty-three, seventy-eight thirty-seven, sixty forty-seven, sixty-four thirty-seven. So it doesn't seem like the requests themselves are increasing in number.
Growth of that school, student population.
And so that's what I wanted to ask for clarification. So we're at a hundred and thirteen percent. Do you know what we were last year?
I do not. Sorry.
Well, I'm just thinking, like, that would be relevant information for me in terms of trying to assess the wisdom of not, well, and we've kept boundaries open in the last couple of years, right, despite what I think everyone would agree is overcapacity, and so have we reached a tipping point, basically, where?
Have our five-year average growth that I shared with you guys last year when we did boundaries, I don't have it on the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Well, and I was trying to even remember last year what Stansberry was at compared. Oh, I wish I would have remembered that. I felt like Stansberry was like at eighteen hundred and Twill was, I mean, it seems like the growth at Stansberry has grown more than more than Twill High School, but I think that's just based on the population growth at that end of the county. Is that fair to say? So my thought was, do we close Stansberry boundaries and not Twill's boundaries? Twill has still got, but I mean, what's the difference of, I mean, we're not closing Grantsville's boundaries, obviously.
Part with that is that if you close Stansberry's and you don't close Twill's, you've gotta account for what Twill has gotta reabsorb back.
Okay, okay, sorry, I didn't, okay, yeah. I just was looking at the sheer numbers between those two schools. It's so interesting cuz we always talk about, whoa, those schools are so close. We'll take six hundred from this school and six hundred from that school to make Desert Peak. Uh, uh, that's probably not the way it's gonna pan out. And I think that's important for our public to see too, as boundaries are coming and people think, oh, the boundary is gonna be down this road. Well, the growth is at the north end of our county, and obviously, we're not sending Lake Point to Desert Peak most likely, you know, but as you get closer to Stansberry and Twill, and anyways, it's just an interesting thought on that number, cuz I didn't realize until you gave us these numbers how vastly bigger Stansberry was than Twill. I thought for a long time they were equal. So that was my impression that, wow, there is a reason to maybe close boundaries, but I see there's only twenty-four.
I mean, the net.
The net is twenty-four, and I understand that. I understand that. I just worry about our administration and our classroom sizes at.
They're, they're stretched. So we can, we can address that with FTE maybe when we come back.
Yeah, I think that's, so I would just make a motion that we leave the boundaries open at all the schools for the twenty three, twenty-four school year? No. Yeah.
Twenty-two.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-three.
Next year.
Twenty-three, twenty-four.
I know you're right in the middle of a motion, but I do have last year's numbers if you guys want them.
Sure.
What?
Oh, you just got them.
Well, I, I also pulled them up in board docs, but um, so, let's see, Stansberry, a hundred, a hundred and let's see. You did it different last year. Are you talking to me?
Stansberry was, was one twelve last year, a hundred and twelve percent. And Twill High was ninety-five.
So Stansberry's gone up to one thirteen. Twill is about one percent.
So I will, I'll make a motion that we leave boundaries open for all schools for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year.
It's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob, is that Bob? Um, to leave boundaries open for the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year. Is there any more discussion of that motion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Oh, Camille, uh, sorry.
That's okay.
Motion still passes.
Your vote counts.
Our motion that we go to executive session in I motion that we go to executive session to be held in the executive conference room at eight twenty-five to discuss property. Give you a second.
Second.
And a roll call.
Okay, it's been moved by Scott, seconded by Bob to move into executive discussion at eight thirty. Um, Bob? Camille? Alan?
Aye.
I say aye. Julia? Scott?
Aye.
Thank you very much for coming. Appreciate it.